May we now give them a round of applause, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, they deserve a round of applause. Very good. As a matter of fact, what are y'all doing next month? That was much better than our pledge of allegiance, or at least the way we do it anyway. All right, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no additions or revisions to the agenda, sir.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That brings us to public comment. Mr. Hackney, will you please read the guidelines for public comment? And Ms. Martin, will you kindly be our timekeeper?
A period of time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. Dickinson County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is an acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section of the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussions regarding agenda items. Public participation with the board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive and the practice is prohibited by Robert's Rules of Order. It is the desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns, or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional public comment. We do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion. We feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that order and reasonable standards of decorum may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered. Speaker will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity and will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed towards specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is necessary. Matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future board consideration if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hackney. Board would like to recognize Mr. Steve Short, VPE.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. You folks know that great things are happening on the field. Great memories are being made by athletes on the pitch, as the soccer players call it. Great memories are being made on the court for volleyball, on the golf courses. And these folks, these choir members, are making great memories as well. And each one of them, there will be so many things that they'll remember from this. And I understand that we may get to hear a little more from them as well, and I look forward to that. I will leave you with a quote from Tony Dungy, which I think fits. "You can have an impact anywhere you are."
Thank you, Mr. Short. Would like to recognize Ms. Phil Smolins, DEA. Welcome, Ms. Smolins.
There's not a lot going on. I just came back from a trip to Richmond where we had numerous committee meetings and a lot of business things took place there. I just want to thank the board and Mrs. Robinson for everything you all are doing for us. And not only are great memories being made in athletes, but they're being made in the classroom. And I am very proud to say that I think some of the best memories are the ones that impact our children on a day-to-day basis. And I am so proud that I can be a part of that. And I appreciate and thank each and every one of you. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Smolins. Board would like to recognize Mr. Kelly Fleming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board. I appreciate your time allowing me to speak tonight. I'll try to use this brief amount of time to have, to bring attention to a important issue within our school system that I've already addressed before of certain people. I know it's probably important to you also because everyone on this board probably has a child, a grandchild, or a friend that works and goes to school in Dickinson County. I'm limited in the amount of time to address school safety, but I would hope and pray that this would consume most of your time as a superintendent and as the school board. My background is in law enforcement, education, and ministry. That's pretty much all that I've ever known. It's all I've ever done. And so I do know a little bit about safety, a little bit about kids, and a little bit about the issues that we have today. I've had a concern for some time now in regard to the safety of our schools in Dixon County. When I was at the sheriff's office, one of the first calls that was made was to Ms. Robinson and addressing school safety. And she was great and working with, and so we pursued together the opportunity to have more school resource officers in our school and was able to do that. And so I was very proud of that and appreciate that help in that. And so even today, there are more SROs in our school than ever before, and that's a great accomplishment. However, SROs serve more in a reactive role than a preventative role. There are ways that SROs can and could be proactive, but mostly are in place to react and assist after an incident occurs. And as you can see, in our court system, in our courtrooms, we have metal detectors. We have different ways in being able to prevent those things from happening. And I just want to present today that I believe that our children are just as precious, if not more precious, than any judge, any lawyer, or anybody that would ever go into a courthouse. Not to say that they're not important. But my hope is that the school can take as many reasonable and effective proactive measures to prevent an officer from having to address that situation when it's its worst. I'm afraid that we're too often more concerned with our image rather than actual safety. If we say that we have issues, threats, or an ineffective plan, then we may look ineffective ourselves. The truth is, is that most people, parents, students, and staff already know the truth. And that usually results in a daily fear and a lack of confidence in the school's safety. The question should be, what is effective and what are we doing? And how are we doing everything that we can do to make sure that everyone is safe? This question's better asked now than maybe after an incident. Many schools wait until there's an incident before putting proactive measures in place, and at that point, it's too late. When we had prayer for our schools up here before the beginning of the school year, comment was made that schools and students, or the students in our schools are the most precious and valued possessions in our entire county. I believe that's true, and I believe that there should not be any inconveniences, any staffing, funding, or policies that would keep us from doing truly everything that we can to protect these precious souls. I think of how much effort staffing, funding, and policies go into SLL testing and wonder why we can't apply that same philosophy and effort to school safety on a daily basis. My children have told me before that during SLL testing, they get escorted to the bathroom. Why would we do this just for testing but not for safety? Education is obviously important, but unless children are safe, they can't learn. And if students and staff don't feel safe, they won't be able to focus on the reason for being here. I don't have time to share all the information I'd like to, but I was deeply upset to learn that the metal detectors placed in our schools were unplugged last year and not utilized. And I did address that and received an answer. I was informed that these were used for temperature readings post-COVID rather than a proactive measure to prevent weapons from entering the building. I was even more disappointed but also surprised this year when I saw that the board had removed all metal detectors in our schools entirely. I do not understand this reasoning at all. And my fear is that the concern for safety only comes in seasons with each school shooting. It's not enough to say today, what we will do is, is we do enough to say we did something, but never truly everything that we could have done. I'm not saying that metal detectors are the solution. I'm saying that one of several things can be used to be proactive and stop violence other than just reacting to it. Just like OnStar in our vehicle, a contact first responders, without a seatbelt, without airbags, it's useless. And so the question should be, what do we need to do to make sure that our school, our students are safe? And I believe that one thing is, is to consider those metal detectors in our schools and other proactive measures. Another proactive measure is a threat assessment that's comprised of students, parents, law enforcement, teachers, administration. I think that if we did that, then we could address and evaluate the current policy and safety measures at our schools. And I believe organizing that committee would bring transparency but also accountability to all involved. I'm sure that you know the facts and data show that active shootings have increased, unfortunately. This should heighten our awareness but also give us a sense of urgency to make sure that everything can be done. In conclusion, I would just ask that you truly do everything that you can proactively do to prevent a violent incident in our schools. Consider these recommendations and questions and put them into action. If children aren't not safe, then they cannot learn. The safety of our children should not have an excuse for why we can't, but a reason for why we will always find a way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Do you have anyone else for public comment? Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, the approval of monthly invoices, revenue and expenditure summary, discussion of school activity funds, approval of field trips, approval of new elementary school construction invoices, the approval of the construction bank reconciliation document, and Dixon County Schools' health statement account. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the next agenda item is information for the school board. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, and good evening, board members. Just conferences that are on the schedule. One is on September the 26th. I also call your attention to October 23rd, the legislative listening session in Abington. And probably the one that I call your attention to is the 2024 VSBA Annual Convention in Williamsburg. And the reason that I call your attention to that is that we have to make reservations and confirmations and those things. So if you believe, excuse me, I've got the hiccups. If you believe that you would like to attend that conference, if you'll let Ms. Baker know at your earliest convenience, that way we can make certain that you have reservations and accommodations for that weekend. Thank you very much.
Ms. Robinson, the one on the 23rd, is that available online or is that in person only?
I think that's only in person, sir. But I will find out, Mr. Vanover, but I believe it's only online. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, in person.
All right, our next item is, Ms. Robinson, you tell us good news from our schools.
Well, you have heard part of our good news for our schools. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you the rest of the good news from our schools. With Ms. Lebeda Muncie, Assistant Principal at Ridgeview High School, and also Mr. Casey Page, who is our choir instructor for this year. Under his direction, an alma mater has been written for Ridgeview. And this evening, they are going to share that with us, I think for the very first time, Mr. Page. For the very first time, the school board will get to hear the alma mater. This is kind of one of our 10th year anniversary gifts. Ms. Muncie was instrumental in moving in that direction with Mr. Page, and so I want to recognize her efforts. They're also going to be singing another song, Mr. Page. Is that correct? Okay. Please notice the choir has been since the beginning of school. And so you'll notice their attire. That has all been done since the beginning of school. And I think that they look absolutely beautiful. So, Mr. Page, please just wow us. And thank you very much. Would you like to say something, sir?
Do you have a copy of the alma mater? Do you have a copy of the alma mater? You can look through that and as Mrs. Robinson mentioned, we do have two spouses that are, you can see that... Which is the Ridgeview blue on the bottom and the black on the top. And the gentleman would be dressed like myself, black on black with blue top. And the informal says Ridgeview High School Chorus. And on the other side, it says the Howling Wolves. So I think that's a fitting name for choir, Be the Wolf Pack. So we're going to sing the alma mater for you, and we hope that you enjoy it. And the second one that we're going to sing is Lovely Day by The Wuthers.
With loyal devotion, remembering the days. When proudly we wore the black, white, and the blue. We love thee, oh Ridgeyou, forever be true. For once we were separate without unity. Now dwell we together in sweet harmony. As children of the mountain, we find hope in you. We love thee, oh Ridgeyou, forever be true. We treasure our wolf pack and days that are past. Our friends and our teachers, our memories that last. Our proud alma mater, our loyalty proved. We love thee, oh Ridgeyou, forever be true.
We hope you enjoyed that. And Mr. McCullough came up with the arrangement, and I came up with the words. And so we thought that was a great project to do, and it's based off of South Carolina's alma mater. But it's pretty fantastic, I think, with the choir kiss. And thank you for the opportunity to sing it for you tonight. We're going to end with Lovely Day, and you'll see some movements with the choir. And so I hope you enjoy.
And most talented children anywhere. So again, thank you so much.
So, again, thank you so much. And I know several of our choir parents are here, and I know how proud you must be. So would you please stand also to be recognized? And Ms. Muncy, would you please also stand? And Mr. Owens, and anyone else who's here. I just want to recognize everyone. Thank you so much. That was excellent.
We're going to move the risers out. And we appreciate y'all. We hope that you come to see our concert. Our concert is November the 11th on Veterans Day. The middle school will be singing a veterans concert for the veterans, and the high school will join them. And then you'll get to hear the rest of the songs of the high school choir and see their movements and all that. So, we appreciate y'all for tuning in. Thank y'all. We're going to go ahead and move these out. Y'all have a great time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Page. You guys have a standing offer to come back any time? Or every time? All right, our next agenda item. We're not done with good news, are we?
No, we've not had good news.
Well, listen, that's great news for you, Mr. Burge, because I would not have had to want to have to follow that. You get to, you get a break.
I'll just wait until our choir... That's okay, you're fine, sir. That's all been done in about seven weeks. They have their attire. That's been done in about four weeks. So it's just been pretty fantastic. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Ryan Henderson to come to the front, please. Mr. Henderson works with our schools. And I always say United Way, but you're not United Way right now. I know, you're EO, so I'll let you explain that. But Mr. Henderson has probably been working with us probably for about two years.
Closer to, it's three over three now.
Three years. He's worked with all of our schools. He works primarily with our staff members, but he also works with some of our students and some of their activities. And so, Mr. Henderson, welcome. He has tried to get here several times, and for one reason or another, we've not been able to connect. So we're thrilled to have you here, sir, and welcome.
Well, thank you. I would say thank you, except now you're making me have to follow that.
You did have to follow that.
And, but I will be honest. I did think it was a lovely day, and it made me forget that I had to drive up here from Abingdon in a flood. So, congratulations to them. And members of the board, Ms. Robinson, thanks for having me. And I've got a little, I'm going to go real quick through this. I've got some slides. I want to show and just share with you some good news. When we originally started as United Way of Southwest Virginia, working with you all on the Trauma Informed School Initiative, that work didn't change. Our name changed. We ended up getting funding through community schools through the state. And so, we really focused on the community school model. I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through here. But I just wanted to share with you from our end, some of the successes that we've noticed, that I particularly have noticed over the last three years working consistently with the teams at your schools. And really here, I don't... Oh, I guess that's just for me. You're welcome to look at that if you want. But we've got some community schools. So this is really kind of the four things I wanted to talk about. The community school process for Dickinson County. And I should introduce myself as Ryan Henderson. I'm the Program Manager for Wellness and Education at EO, which was United Way of Southwest Virginia up until about a year ago. We did not change our programming, but we changed our name mainly because we wanted to partner more with folks in East Tennessee, Southern West Virginia. It allows us to expand our partnerships there. But the work that we've been doing is the same. And so, the process here in Dickinson County is similar to our community schools that I serve over in Norton City, as well as Bristol, Virginia. And then I've got a colleague in Washington County doing the thing over there. But each school has a client, what we call a climate team. It's a team of different teachers, one administrator, one school counselor. The communities in schools coordinator is part of that as well. And Propel, in the last few years, has also been part of that since they've been in the school. Each climate, now you see that picture. That's a little bit of an old school picture, Ms. Rita. She's not here with us anymore. We will miss her. But she, that's a picture from about 2022. Each school has its own team every month or month and a half. And typically, we usually meet. It's going to be a little bit different this year. Teams typically consist of, I mentioned there, one administrator, school counselor. And basically, whatever the team thinks needs to be represented within the school, we want to get their feedback and their input. And then the teams meet to take something call. And this is what we did. We did the shape assessment surveys last year for the second time. We did that in the fall, fall of 2021 and winter of 2022, the first time we did it. You can go to the next slide, please. Real quick, the shape tool is through the University of Maryland's School of Mental Health. And that's the, where our teams get together, we'll do those surveys. And it's really just a tool of reflection, that the teams get to answer certain questions, and they get to have conversation. They get to decide on a scale of one to four or one to six, what do they think about and how do they see their school? We don't compare them with any other school that we work with or with any other school in the county. It's just real, raw, honest conversation so that we can see, hey, what are we doing great? What are things that are challenges for us? And how do we overcome those challenges? Next slide, please. I always like saying that, makes me feel professional. Here's just an example, real quick example of what the slide, what the shape tool looks like. Well, each survey has about eight different, like here you see eight different sections. And the questions range from maybe two to 12 questions addressing either trauma-informed or mental health policies and practices within the school. Next slide. Here's an example of one of the questions for, that one of the schools might answer. It's like, to what extent does your school or district have clearly defined policies that are sensitive to students exposed to trauma? Don't worry, that too is not indicative of any school in Dickinson County. That's just an example. But the best thing is not really the scores, but the conversations that come from the questions. Next slide, please. Those scores are tallied up through the shape system. Next slide. And then, the best part is the strategic plan that each team comes up with based on, not just the, are informed by the results, but more importantly, informed by the conversations the team has. And we make sure that we don't do anything that they don't think is important and useful to the school, their staff, and their students. Each school comes up with two to three goals, which is what they did in the spring of last year, and we're implementing them this year. Those goals, like I mentioned, are based on results and team conversations. And all the goals address at least one of the four pillars of community school. Just not to be confused with communities in schools. They're the folks who are the boots on the ground. So if you're like hearing communities in schools and all of these different, the same words over and over again. There is a difference. The community school model hits those four basic pillars, and we want to make sure that our goals address at least one of those. And then we, they get to create the goals, and then I create the document for them. They approve it. Then we figure out a plan to put those things into action. Next slide. All right, School Resource Guide. This is just one of the goals that all of the schools have implemented over the last two years. And you all did receive a paper copy of that for the high school. All the schools this year have actually received their paper copies. And every school gets to implement them in different ways. For those of you just listening or looking at this, a School Resource Guide is really just every, who is every partner within the walls of our school? Academic, behavioral, physical, mental health? What are all the resources that are meeting our students' needs in the school? And then, how do we contact them? Who are they? And we want to make sure that those go to the staff so that they know who to connect with? Because a lot of times, our staff, we're busy. We're busy working, we're working with our students, trying to get their SOL scores up. We forget sometimes who might be in our school with us. So this gets them easy access to connect with them. And then some schools decide, hey, print off more copies. We want to give these to our families so that our families know who's in the schools working with our students. And if they need to get ahold of them, this is how they can do it. Next slide. You can skip this one, because I just talked about some of that. So next slide. That's an example of what they look like for those of you who don't have the paper copies. Next slide. And then here, just to end, wrap it up a little bit. Some of the other goals that Dickinson County schools have decided to kind of run with. Mental health first aid for all staff, which has already been implemented. Five Bridges to Wellness, which is a training for staff themselves to really figure out like, what does wellness look like to me so that I can be in a place to better serve my students? And as importantly, to better serve the people I go home to. Because our teachers are not just that. They are full nuanced human beings who have other people waiting for them outside the walls of the school. And if they're able to be, feel great within the walls of the school, they can go back home, work with them, hang out with their families, and then come back to the school refreshed as well. Zones of Regulation Collaboration. So we actually collaborated with some folks in Bristol, Virginia. They implement this kind of curriculum, which is really just a regulation curriculum within the elementary schools. So we were able to bring someone who is an expert in that content and collaborate with some of our elementary school counselors and teachers there. And then, school-wide wellness. This is something that the high school, and props to Dr. Muncy. She's just an amazing resource. We helped out with the Drew Robinson campaign. We helped out also with some of the other things that we're planning, and she's planning within the school, and that team is planning. And then some staff wellness initiatives too, which is a possible collaboration with Dickinson County Behavioral Health, which they're already a strong partner. And so, what are some other ways we can partner with them? So, I want to make sure that you all know, this is something that is 100% completely collaborative. This cannot be done without the folks from communities and schools, from Propel, from the teachers, the staff, from the administrators of each school. So, this is some that I just wanted to share with you what's happening. And in my three years working in Dickinson County, I have seen a lot of growth in wanting to pursue, how do we create safer schools for our students in a lot of different ways? And how do we make sure that our staff and our students are getting the resources they need, as well as our families? Y'all have a lot of great resources. I'm just happy to be one of them, one of the many. And if you ever have any questions, Ms. Robinson has my contact info. Feel free to reach out to me. But I appreciate y'all so much. And back into the flood. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and drive safely. Safe travels, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Henderson? That's all right. Any questions for Mr. Henderson? Thank you, sir, very much. At this time, Karen, Ms. Karen Martin, if she'll come to the front, please, and talk to us about our attendance and enrollment. That packet is included in your packet that you have with you.
Ryan, I'm sorry you had to follow the choir. I'm usually the one that gets stuck with following all the great acts, so... But I'm sorry you had to. But now I had to follow Ryan, so... This evening, I'll bring you the total. Last month, I was able to give you our 10-day report. This will be the actual total for the entire month of August. In your packet, as usual, you'll have the attendance percentages, the monthly percentage comparison for the past five years. There's interim withdrawals for each of the schools. There's a sort of a summary of the intervention team's notes, which is basically our attendance committees. Remember, we changed the name last year. And then there's a monthly picture of the incentives that they did. This month, we, the high school is selling the student athletic passes. So each school did an award for two students to win the athletic passes. Those were a big hit for those students. So you'll see that in those pictures. And then also should be included is an enrollment comparison from 2015 to 2024, broken out by grades. And I, which is just some data for you to look at, which is interesting to see how our enrollment has changed in the last 10 years. As you look at our enrollment, we did have a decrease of 36 students from last year. We show for enrollment from K-12 for August, we have 1,737 students. We have 86 students in pre-K, the three-year-old program, and our postgraduate, which gives us a total of 1,823 students for the end of August. And again, that is a decrease of 36 students. For our monthly attendance percentage for August, Ridgeview Elementary School had the highest percentage at 94.34%. And all of the schools were in the 90 percentile mark this month, which we are striving to stay there for the year. I checked it yesterday for September, and I know I still got a couple of days to go, but I was a little optimistic. And so far, we're in the 90s for September. So knock on wood, we stay there. We've got a couple more days to go. And hopefully, the flu season doesn't hit us coming up, because I know the weather's getting ready to change on us. But so far, September, we're looking good. There are not any chronic absenteeism numbers with you for this evening, with it being so early in the year. But I do want to remind you that we continually monitor that. The, all schools have been given a list of those students that were chronically absent last year. And so, they're on a watch list. This summer, we sent out letters to each of those students just reminding them about chronic absenteeism and the importance of attendance, and telling the parents that, hey, we're keeping up with your kid this year. If there's some issues, you know, let us know so we can help. And so, we're sort of keeping a close eye on those students to sort of intervene in case there's issues this year. Some of the incentives that the committee or Absence Intervention Team have been working on, I think they've got some, again, I mentioned to you, the athletic passes. Some of the incentives that they're looking at is some Chromebooks, Awards Day for the Best Class. I think we've got pizza parties, ice cream parties, game days, weekly prizes. Communities in Schools is always a wonderful resource force. They do pop-up days. When what those are is just, you know, if you're here today, they may show up and it's a pop-up, you know? They give out a prize that day. So you never know what day that's going to be. The kids seem to enjoy those, and they're a wonderful resource force. So we're thankful for those folks. And then, all the schools are in the middle of planning their family engagement, which is very important as well, to get our families in the schools and engaged with what's going on in the schools. And hopefully, that will increase our attendance as well. That's all I have for attendance, but I will entertain any questions or anything that you may have to ask of me.
Hearing none, no, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I think now we're ready for Mr. Burge. With the Ridgeview Elementary Construction update.
So I didn't have a presentation this month because there's not a lot changed around. This month, though, we have been working behind the scenes, kind of doing the punch list on the new addition to the elementary school. We also got the dumpster pad for the elementary school almost complete. We have to put two bollards in when the weather breaks for us. And the parking lot, we were hoping to start on it this week, but with all this rain, it made me push back a week, maybe two weeks, because they were getting held up on the job they were on before. So we continue to keep that in the, you know, on the list to get started on, and looking forward to get that in place before winter. Should be no issue with that. Other than that, that's kind of what's been going on on the job site and around the building. We hope to finish up the panels that are on the new west, the north side of the new addition, hopefully in the next few weeks. We've had issues getting the panels from across the water and all the pieces and parts. But they have the panels. They're just missing a couple pieces of the metal that goes behind them. Hopefully, in the next... Hopefully in the next week, we will be able to get going and get that wrapped up so that building is completed. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Hicks, I'd like to recognize that on Friday night, I was, saw a gentleman wearing our T-shirt that all the teachers wore on the first day, and I said, who is that? And that was Mr. Burge, coming up at the game when we played Virginia High. And he was a howling Wolf Pack member that night.
Mostly at the refs.
With some certain calls that were made. And so, but I do want to recognize him and thank him for being there that evening. And he's always been a howling Wolf Pack whenever he's at a game. Very supportive of Ridgeview and our players on the volleyball team and in all those sports. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Next item is the preliminary 2425 DCPS accreditation report and SOL results. Mr. Mullins.
You do have a copy of this packet in your, with your things.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. I do think there is a copy, you shared with me.
There is. We got it.
And I think, Ryan, it will have it up here for the public as well. But we do have a few slides to share with you regarding the preliminary state accreditation report. I think the Virginia Department of Education plans to make this information public next week, September 30th. We also have a few slides that we want to share with you regarding our SOL test results from last year. As you can see, it's called the 2425 State Accreditation. The 2425 State Accreditation is based on test results and other data from the 2324 school year. So I just want to clarify that and make sure it is a little confusing sometimes. But as they release it for this year, it will be called the 2425 State Accreditation. Next slide, please, Ryan. Before we get into those results, just to briefly share with everyone, what are the indicators that the state looks at in order to determine if a school is accredited or not? So the state standards of accreditation indicators. First, for the elementary and middle schools, they are evaluated on the following indicators. Overall proficiency and growth rates in English achievement. And this is to include both reading and writing scores. So the overall proficiency is the pass rates for any reading or writing SOL assessments. And then growth rates are for students who did not pass the test. They did not pass the test in the previous year. For the current year, they did not pass the test, but they showed enough growth, or they improved, showed enough progress towards passing the test, that the state considered them as what they consider and call a growth student. So in the elementary and middle school, we look at not only those students who pass, but those who are considered as growth students in both English. And then the next bullet there is overall proficiency and growth rates in mathematics. Overall proficiency in science, there's no growth that is calculated into science. In reading and math, those tests are given in grades three through eight. So they're given each year. In science, that's not the case. You don't have that each and every year. So there's no growth that's calculated for science SOL assessments. They also look at English achievement gaps among student groups. So when we talk about student groups, we're looking at the various subgroups to include white students, black students, Hispanic or Asian students, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. So we also, or the state also, looks at how students in each of those subgroups perform when they look at accreditation. Mathematics achievement gaps among student groups, and then chronic absenteeism. And as Ms. Martin just mentioned, and we'll mention more as we go through these slides, though chronic absenteeism is involved in each and every school's accreditation calculation. Next slide, please, Ryan. Now for the high schools, they have a few more indicators that are factored in or considered for their accreditation. So high schools have overall proficiency in English reading and writing. High schools do not get to take into account growth students. And again, that's because at the high school, students take tests only in certain grade levels. They do not take them each and every year. So the growth calculation cannot be made. Overall math, overall proficiency in mathematics, and again, growth does not apply for the high school. Overall proficiency in science, English achievement gaps among student groups, mathematics achievement gaps among student groups. Then some additional indicators for the high school is a graduation and completion index. They look at how many students we are graduating in a cohort. Dropout rate, how many students are dropping out. Again, chronic absenteeism, and college and career and civic readiness index. And this is an index that tracks the number of students that are taking either advanced placement or dual enrollment courses, who are earning a career and technical education credential, and finishing a CTE or Career Technical Education sequence, and also those students who are participating in a work-based learning experience. We've talked about that in some of our meetings that we've had recently. All those students go into the College, Career, and Civic Readiness Index. Okay, next slide, please, Ryan. With all that said, those are all the things that are looked at to determine accreditation status from the preliminary 2425 school accreditation report to be released next week. Clintwood Elementary School would be accredited. Ridgeview Elementary School accredited with conditions. Ridgeview Middle School accredited with conditions. Ridgeview High School accredited with conditions. So all of our schools will be accredited for the 2425 school year. And we definitely want to congratulate and recognize the hard work of our students, our staff, all the school staff that's involved, from the bus drivers to the cooks, to the classroom teacher and the parent professionals that are in our classes, but also the hard work of our students and the parents that help support them. We appreciate all they've done to have all of our schools accredited for this year. Now, before we move on and look at the SOL results, which went into a lot of this accreditation information, we want to mention that the VDOE is currently in the process of changing the accreditation system. They've been doing that, looking at that for a few years now. And they are very close, I guess, to releasing all that information here within the next few months, and the superintendent's meetings and so forth, that they've been sharing the new information, and in public meetings, the VDO has been sharing that information. I share that with you to say accreditation will still continue. SOLs will still continue to be a primary focus from the state for accreditation, but the system is changing. So everything we talked about there, a lot of those things will continue to be looked at, continue to be an indicator, but maybe the way they're calculated, maybe the way growth is calculated might not count just as much as it did previously. There's going to be some changes in our accreditation system next year. Next slide, please. Now, SOL pass rates by testing subject content areas. So as we already mentioned, the SOLs are a big part of our accreditation and what the state looks at when they look at a school's accreditation status. This slide here basically shows how Dickinson County students did in comparison to other students across the state of Virginia. How we're doing versus the rest of the state. So if we look at the first subject area here, English reading. For Dickinson County, the pass rate for our students was 75%. So 75% of the English reading tests that were given in Dickinson County last year, 75% of those were passed. Our students passed 75% of those tests. Again, this is not the growth rate, this is strictly the pass rate, okay? If you factor growth into that, you're going to get a much higher percentage, but we're just looking at the pass rate. The state pass rate for those same English reading tests, 73%. So Dickinson County students performed two percentage points better. Mathematics as a subject area, the Dickinson County pass rate, and this is all math tests taken from third grade through high school, through possibly through Algebra II. 77% of those tests were passed by Dickinson County students. The state pass rate for all math tests taken, 71%. Science, Dickinson County students had a pass rate of all science tests taken last year of 66%. The state pass rate was 68%. We are two percentage points below the state pass rate in the science. History, we had a 67% pass rate on all history assessments, SOL assessments that were given, and the state pass rate on all history tests were 65%. So our students scored higher or had a higher pass rate in three of the four main core areas than other students across the state of Virginia. And I would mention that the sixth with conditions, that means we didn't get as high, achieve as high as the state would like for us to, or as we would like for us to. So the first area of concern, science achievement scores at Ridgeview Elementary School. We had a 46.75% pass rate on our science test last year. That's a fifth grade science assessment. We think a couple of reasons that may factor into that is, of course, it was a new school, and the focus a lot of times is on reading and math. That's in, and science was not maybe as focused on as much as it should have been. Reading and math moving into a new school, you're combining these schools. We have got to focus on reading and math, and we did, and we did well. But we have to focus on our math scores. Of course, for this year, our fifth grade has moved over to Ridgeview Middle School. Wherever those students are at, whether it be the elementary school or middle school, that's a focus of concern and a focus that we're looking to improve on for this coming year. The second area of concern, again, I told you we would be back to chronic absenteeism, but chronic absenteeism rates. Chronic absenteeism is defined as students who are absent for 10%, which is 18 days or more of the school year, are considered chronically absent regardless of whether absences are excused or unexcused. So we go to school, we plan to go to school, we schedule 180 days. So 10% would be 18 days. Across the division last year, Clintwood Elementary School had 29% chronic absenteeism rate. So 29% of the students missed at least 18 days at Clintwood Elementary last year. Ridgeview Elementary School, 36.66%. 36, almost 37% of the students at Ridgeview Elementary School missed over 18 days last year. Ridgeview Middle School, 42.56%. Over 42% of the students missed over 18 days last year. And Ridgeview High School, 48.07%. Not quite, but close to a half of our students missed over 18 days last year. And remember, this does include excused and unexcused. It's no matter what. That's the way the state calculates it, that's how we have to report it. So this continues to be, I know we've talked about it many board meetings, and will continue to, Ms. Martin just mentioned it. We track it, that's why it comes up a lot. But the chronic absenteeism rates are a reason for the accredited with conditions. One of the reasons for us to be accredited with conditions. Next slide, please, Ryan. Areas to Celebrate. So we had our areas of concern, we also have areas to celebrate. SOL pass rates. State ranking among the 131 school divisions across the state. So there are 131 school divisions in the state of Virginia. These SOL pass rates are calculated, this did not come from the VDOE. These are calculated by the Comprehensive Instructional Program, or CIP program, but they are using SOL pass rate data from across the state. So these results, although they do not come directly from the VDOE, they come directly from the data that the VDOE provides. Dickinson County Public Schools as a whole ranked 42nd in the state on their SOL pass rate for all tests taken across the division. The SOL pass rate for all tests for the 2324 school year was 73.06%. So this means every test taken from third grade to high school, whether it be math, reading, science, or history, 73.06% of those tests were passed. This is an improvement from the previous year. We had a state rank of 51st and an SOL pass rate of 69.29%. So we improved close to 4% in our pass rate, and we improved nine places in our state rank. 42nd out of 131, we're in the top one-third of the states in Virginia when you look at the data in that way as far as SOL pass rates. Another area to celebrate. Clintwood Elementary School achieved the third highest gain of any school in the state last year for their SOL pass rate. They went from a pass rate in the 2223 school year of 62.34%. Every test taken at Clintwood Elementary in 2223, math, reading, science, or history, 62% of those students passed. To this past year, the 2324 school year, they had a pass rate of 83.11%. An improvement of over almost 21 percentage points. And they, that was the third highest gain of any school in Virginia, and that's quite an accomplishment. And we definitely want to recognize those students and staff at Clintwood Elementary School last year. Next slide, please, Ryan. Got just a couple more here. Continue on with the areas to celebrate, and again, we're continuing to look at SOL pass rates. And again, we're looking at rankings amongst the 131 school divisions across the state. These are individual tests and where Dickinson County students ranked according to the other school divisions. For third grade reading, our third grade reading pass rate was 71.88%. That ranked 35th in the state of Virginia. Fourth grade reading, 80.51%, ranked 22nd in the state of Virginia. Seventh grade reading with a pass rate of 74.48%, that ranked 40th in the state of Virginia. Third grade math with a pass rate of 89.76%, ranked second in the state of Virginia. That's quite an accomplishment. Fourth grade math with a pass rate of 78.81%, ranked 32nd. Eighth grade math with a pass rate of 75.63%, ranked 19th in the state. Algebra I scores, pass rate of 93.41%, that ranked 25th in the state out of 131 divisions. And the last slide, geometry. We had a pass rate in Dickinson County of 87.10%, that ranked 34th in the state. World Geography, pass rate of 63.04%, ranked 37th in the state. World History I, a pass rate of 78.50%, that ranked 16th in the state compared to 131 divisions. World History II, a pass rate of 72.73%, ranked second in the state. Virginia and US History, a pass rate of 47.83%, ranked 19th. And Grade Eight Science with a pass rate of 68.80%, ranked 40th. So I tried to give you the tests that were also in the top one-third of the state. We had several there, maybe 13 different tests that ranked in the top one-third with a couple ranking second in the state. So we just want to recognize and congratulate our schools, our students, and our staff on their hard work. It is a trend, we are trending in the right direction. They're already hard at work on this, this year. They're already hard at work on this, coming, this year's test scores that'll be coming up for some students at our middle school and students at our high school. We'll start those in December. Everybody will join in in, in May, but they're already hard at work trying to continue on with this positive results as far as our SOL tests are going. That's all I have to share, but I'll try to answer any questions if anybody has any, or Ms. Robinson, you may want to add something to that, I'm not sure, but if anybody has anything, I'll, I'll do my best.
Do you have anything for Mr. Mullins? Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Thank you.
Mr. Hicks, with the board, I'd like to entertain, before we go into the next section, just a short break or anything in that manner.
Power on. Power on. Power on.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Our next, go ahead, sir.
All right, our next agenda item is the update on the Cell Phone Free Education Document from the VDOE, Ms. Robinson.
You have a copy of this in your packet or with your handouts, and this is the news article where, released last Tuesday regarding the Cell Phone Free Education Guidance Document from the Virginia Department of Education. Of course, this document was released as a response to Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Thirty-Three, and there are some changes and some things with this document that I'd like to bring to the board's attention at this time. The first item that I'd like to bring to the board's attention is the highlighted part of this, the first, the second paragraph, the highlighted part, which defines the final guidance, defines Cell Phone Free Education in Virginia's Public Schools, bell to bell. And what that indicates is that cell phones should be turned off, they should be stored away from their first bell at the start of the school day to begin instructional time until the dismissal bell rings at the end of the academic day. So bell to bell includes lunch and includes time in between class periods, it basically includes all day. So that's the first thing that we see with the guidance document from the VDOE in response to Governor Youngkin's executive order. The next parts of these articles are just some concerns, of course, and the research is pretty indicative of the media, online effect of, on the mental health issues of our students that are caused by cell phones or addiction to cell phones. But it also mentions some of the concerns that our parents have had across the state. Of course, one is around medical needs, specifically the use of phone apps for health monitoring. We have addressed those concerns here at our, at each of our schools because we have many children that do use phone-based apps. And the next concern was just the parents wanting information to reach children during the school day or specifically during an emergency situation. So those were some of the concerns that were raised across the state. If you recall from our survey results, those were also some of the concerns that were raised in our survey result. The third page of this article talks about the different age-appropriate cellphone restrictions that the guidance specifies, elementary, middle school, and high school. All three talk about bell to bell, and cell phones outside the bell to bell, they may be used after school or before school, but not from bell to bell. So I just wanted to bring that next to your point, your attention. The next paragraph of that, it specifies even more that the guidance addresses that students should not have cell phones on their person during the bell to bell school day, including not in their pockets or in their backpack. That cell phones should be in their locker or in a lock pouch or in a designated place, but again, it goes from bell to bell, not available during class, I'm sorry, not available during meals and class changes. And then it asks boards, school boards, local school boards to look at their existing policy, review their existing policies, and if necessary, then adopt and implement age-appropriate policies and procedures, and I'm on the last page, again, it's highlighted, and procedures aligned with the guidance on the bell to bell cellphone policies by January first, twenty-twenty-five. We have already a cellphone policy, as you know, that we adopted in the first day of school. From the majority of the reports in our schools, it is working well, but now with this new guidance, we'd like to look at how to revise with the board's guidance, how to revise our own policy that aligns with the document, the document that was released. Mr. Hicks and board members, any thoughts, comments as we move along with this new information?
Guess with our, with our present policy, Ms. Robinson, I guess that any changes that we would look at would be during lunch and during the class changes.
Yes, sir.
Because they would have access to that at this point in time.
Yes, and the fact, I think, sir, that they could not have it on their person.
Right.
Yes, sir. With the board's pleasure, I would like to present the board in October, a revised draft policy that comprised of feedback and input from our administrators, our teachers, perhaps students also, I think that's going to be important, but bring to the board a revised draft policy for discussion at that time. From the indication from the document, it will have bell to bell, unless the board sees that differently. I believe that, you know, we, we probably need to go in that direction and, and should go into that direction. And then, you know, let our parents, communicate with our parents and our stakeholders immediately that the board is looking at this and, and that there has been a change in the guidance regarding the cellphone policy, and so that they will have time to, to input, for input and feedback. Is there a different direction that the board would like for us to look at, or any thoughts on that?
I just, I feel like a draft policy, you know, looking to align to the executive order with, you know, nothing wrong with looking at a draft and getting, getting that and start the conversation.
All right, so I think what I'm, I think, just to summarize that, the board agrees that we present to you next, in October, a revised policy that aligns with the guidance document, that we have input from our administrators, our teachers, our students, that we make our parents aware, that there will be a revision in the Dixon County cellphone policy now, and that it will be aligned with the bell to bell, which includes lunch and time in between class periods. Did I get, did I summarize that correctly, Mr. Hicks?
Sounded good to me. Anybody else? Yeah, I mean, I, if, in the gathering of that information, I know that a lot of this is brought about because of the impact of, of mental health of our students.
Absolutely.
You know, you know, I, I'd love to hear from, from our folks that work with our kids every, every day, you know, what do they see, you know, how many instances or when, and when they counsel folks, how many times is something related to phone and social media comes up in, in those discussions with them, you know? If there was any way to, to collect some of that information, I think that would be very, very helpful and maybe very eye-opening.
Certainly, we will do that, and so we'll work on a revised policy and at least have a beginning point, and then the board can certainly have input and, and feedback in that. I just, we just wanted direction as to which way to go. So thank you very much, and, and we will have that for you in October. And if you have ideas or thoughts that you think about between now and, and then, please be sure to pick up the phone and, or call me or come by and see me and, and to share those ideas with us. Thank you, sir. Thank you, board members.
All right, our next agenda item is the approval of the proposed DCPS CTE drug testing policy. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Just, we've had this item on the agenda for two months. Ms. Edwards could not be here this evening, but the policy or the proposed policy was included in your board packet. I will try to answer any questions that you may have, but at this time, we are just recommending a vote on the proposed CPS CTE drug testing policy for possible implementation, or that the board would rather not move in that direction at this time. But I will answer any questions or if the board has any comments, please, please use this time to express those.
Yes, you know, I'm guilty of holding this up twice, for sure, so I guess maybe I should comment at least. The, you know, I don't have any, any real issues with it, I, I do understand both sides of the argument for the testing policy and the, help me out, Mr. Hackney, the workplace simulation.
Yeah, simulated workplace.
Simulated workplace, you know, because most of our students, most folks now, when they go into a job and those kind of things, they can be drug tested, and that simulates that for our students, and it gets them started off on the right foot. So I, I do, do understand the, the policy and, and the reason behind it. You know, I understand that, you know, at least from the folks that have reached out to me and talked to me about this policy, I understand their arguments as well.
I may, I may have, may want to clarify that, just for a question, I guess, this is not a mandated policy for students not participating in that program. This is just for that program, correct?
It is for CTE.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We also have a drug testing policy for athletes or those that.
Correct, right.
Yes, sir. I think I, did I answer your question?
Yes.
This was a suggested policy to implement by our consultants in West Virginia because they faced some of the same issues that we face, and that is students that try to, when they graduate, go into the workplace and perhaps they cannot have, they cannot pass a drug test to find employment. So this is just a stage to help them at the high school level work through that.
Members, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed DCPS CTE drug testing policy as presented? So move. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll oppose this one. Motion passed. Next agenda item is the approval of staff stipends. Ms. Lacy Edwards, please.
For all of our full-time and part-time staff, we have been given approval from Virginia Department of Education to use our remaining SR three funds for a stipend for all Dixon County Public Schools employees. We have allocated just over four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for this. It's reimbursable through the use of the SR three Division Allocation Funds. The proposal would include all full-time employees will receive one thousand two hundred dollars, all part-time employees will receive eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. We have a handful, I think three or four eighty percent employees, I think we have three teachers and one bus driver that are eighty percent employees. We propose that they receive eighty percent of the full-time stipend, which would be nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then all full-time employees who work two positions, we have sixteen teacher drivers, and we actually have two driver cooks, I think your packet says one, but we found another one when we got started on it. So we have two driver cooks, and they will receive the one thousand two hundred dollar full-time stipend, and then half of the part-time stipend, so four hundred and thirty-three dollars. That would put these eighteen individuals at one thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. So we did say in here too, also, that the employees must be actively employed on the past Friday, September the twentieth. We had to have a cutoff so that we could get it processed in time to get it through the bank. And I believe that's it. Does anybody have any questions for me on the proposed stipend?
And this will go out with the September.
Yes, ma'am.
Payroll, because all SR funds must be expended by September the thirtieth.
That's correct.
And we just received word, I guess, last week that we were able to do this, so we've kind of been in a hurry, in a tighter timeline.
Appreciate your work on this, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion to approve the proposed stipends as presented?
Agreed.
Is there a second? No, there was, I heard. A second. All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Springs, our next agenda item is the approval of the Certificate of Program Completion. Mr. Deal.
Hey, how's everybody doing today? Good, I hope?
Good.
Good. I've been working on this for a little while, and before I was able to present it, I tried to find out as much information as I could about this. So the state of Virginia, of course, offers multiple diplomas and certificates. In your packet there, you should have had a one-page document, and it kind of lists out about five of them. So just to review those, you have the Advanced Studies Diploma, which we give to our students who, you know, do pretty good academically. We also have a Standard Diploma, we have the Applied Studies, which typically go for our special education students. You have a GED certificate, and the one that we don't have right now is the Certificate of Program Completion. What it is, is let's say we have a student who's not special ed, but they, they not really, I'd say gifted enough to do well on all their SOL tests, but they do well in the academic arena. So in other words, they may pass all their math classes, all their science classes, all their history classes, but when it comes down to an SOL test, they may lack one, and they, and we don't give those students anything. So what this would be, would be a student who has passed all the academic coursework, but they lack a verified credit, which is passing an SOL test. So we would give that child a Certificate of Program Completion and allow them, which we do anyway, allow them multiple times to come back and take that test to try to earn a regular diploma. So what I would like for you guys to do, if you, if you would, is approve that so we can use that for our students. And I did call the high school just to try to get an idea about how many students I'm talking about, you know, three to four at most. Usually a child will, you know, maybe not get enough credits in order to graduate, but there's only a few of them who actually push through and get all the courses and all the credits, but they lack that verified credit. If you have any questions, I do need to emphasize that this is not a diploma. It, it does count for us as a dropout, but it does award that child with a, a, you went to school for twelve years, you completed all of your coursework, you did a good job, you worked hard at it, but let's continue working on those SOL tests. So I guess I have to have a motion to approve that.
Also, we want to. Also, we want to reinstate or emphasize that this is a last option. You know, we want children to have a diploma to grab with that. And as I shared with, with you this morning, this would require, or yesterday also, this would require approval from the superintendent or the director of instruction, because as I said, this is the last option available, and we want to make sure that we give that child every opportunity to come back and, and take the test so that they can receive a diploma. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Deal? I think this is, this is good for kids and those certain instances, for sure. So no questions. Do we have a motion to approve the Certificate of Program Completion? So move. We'll hear a second.
Second.
Got a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Deal. All right. Next is the approval of proposed VSBA policies. Ms. Martin?
Hello again, board members. Earlier in the month, we sent you five policies for review. Those policies, there was one that had a text revision, there was some misspelled words. One was a clarification for Virginia code. One was an errant change that they, that we looked at in May, that I had you approve, and then they decided they, they changed it, and then they didn't want to change it. So they then sent it back to us and said, no, we didn't want to change this. So they changed it back to the original text. And then one, one was a cross-reference to avoid duplication of a, of another VSBA policy. So those were pretty simple policy changes, but again, they were policy changes, so I asked for, are there any questions that you had when you looked at those? And if so, I can answer those at this time, and if not, I would ask for your approval.
Everything looked really minor, mostly just.
Yes.
Were grammar change here and there. Any questions for Ms. Martin? No questions. Do I have a motion to approve the VSBA policies as presented? So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Skip around here a minute. I'm going to go with the next agenda item, approval of early payroll process. Ms. Edwards.
Just a reminder to you all that our November board meeting is going to be on Monday, November the 18th. That's due to attendance of our school board members at the VSBA conference in Williamsburg on November the 20th to the 22nd. So we are requesting approval to pay invoices, which come in after November the 18th, to avoid late fees, things like that. We will keep you informed of that, of those bills and the amounts and things like that. And then we would also present those for your approval at the December board meeting on December the 18th. We're also recommending early payroll for our staff on Friday, November 22nd. That's the day before Thanksgiving break, the last day that would be at work before Thanksgiving break. Friday, December the 20th, again, that's the last day before Christmas break, and then Friday, January 24th. And this kind of allows our employees to get their paychecks a little bit early before the holidays. I think we've done that the last several years. Any questions for me on that?
Any questions for Ms. Edwards? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed dates for early payroll as presented?
No more.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you all.
All right. Next agenda, agenda item, I will turn over to Mr. Hackney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very proud to receive the news yesterday that our own chair, Mr. Hicks, has been nominated for the Virginia School Board Association Regional Chair. Correct me if I get any of this wrong, but this came about as the current regional chair was nominated for the state chair. Is that right, Ms. Robinson?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. And this doesn't necessarily get me in, it's the rest of the region would have to vote on it, and I guess they figure if you, if your own board won't vote on it to approve it, the rest of them aren't going to either.
So it's, so it's a pending nomination.
Yeah, it's a pending, yes.
So that requires approval of our, our board, so I'll open it to any motion for approval of our chair, Mr. Hicks, to be appointed or nominated to the regional chair.
I'm proud to make that nomination. Second.
We got a, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an acceptance speech.
No acceptance speech. I'll just say, thank you, Mr. Hackney.
Got you. All right. So at this time, we'll have board comments. I don't know which end I started on last time. Mr. Hackney, you want to go first?
Yeah, I can go. Just looking back on tonight's meeting, I appreciate Mr. Fleming coming in, I think, early on tonight, and some of his comments, something I think our board has to, you know, consider those types of issues and have those conversations. Very pleased to hear the choir tonight, they did a great job. Awesome to have an alma mater, that's very cool. And it was well done. It was well-written and well-arranged. And appreciated the gentleman from EO, I can't recall that acronym again, but they're formerly United Way, currently.
Ryan Henderson.
Yeah, Ryan, yes. And it was some good things they got going on, and very glad to get to do this tonight. That accreditation looks good. We still got some areas for improvement, but overall, it was a good report, and glad to, glad to have that.
Choir performance was something to see and hear. Certainly congratulate those responsible for that. That's, that was just about as good as it gets anywhere, I would think. And it certainly shows the talent that we have and the good people that are leading those students. I noticed our volleyball team and football team have been very successful up to this date. I believe both are undefeated at this point. That always has a positive impact on the community, and especially those parents and all the people that support those players. It's a, we tend to forget just how level dedication it takes to put all that time in and to become as skillful as they are at their positions, and I hope they have a best attitude to go along with that. And I certainly think the beginning of school, from what I can hear and see, has been a pleasant and effective beginning, and I hope that continues for the entire year. So many, so many things, as Kelly addressed, I doubt there's not a person up here that doesn't share his feelings with how he spoke there. And around this country, it's just, in my time in high school, I don't have any recollection of anything happening in that regard, but it's a different day, and we know that. And I'd ask that whatever can be done to improve the security of our students and staff and visitors and parents and anyone that's here, that it be done. And I do appreciate Kelly and the way he presented that in such a good way.
Well, I'll also thank Mr. Fleming. Those, beginning those conversations, starting conversations about, about safety is, is never overdone, and it's always, always welcome for that. I'd also like to recognize the choir and all those folks that, and the work they put into that, that it was, it was excellent. They thought I was kidding, but I would actually love for them to come back every month and to sing the National Anthem along with something else. Just want to congratulate everybody on our accreditation, our SOL scores, and all those things that takes a, you know, as Mr. Mullins said, it takes the, the entire team, from the parents to teachers, bus driver, everybody involved. So, you know, congratulations to the, the whole team for what we accomplished there. We've still got some work to do, but that's okay. We will tackle it. Also like to thank everybody that put, put effort in, Ms. Edwards and everybody else who, who took some time and looked at being able to provide these stipends for our staff. You know, normally, we kind of thank you like we just did, and thank the team for everything you did for SOL scores. We don't have anything else, but this is a good time that when we can, we can vote and, and be able to provide actually something to you. So we're, we're proud to do that, for sure.
Well, like everyone's already said, I, I'm glad Mr. Fleming came and spoke his mind tonight. As I, as I said last time, the public comment section is a time for people to come and discuss things like that with us. And I know one of the first things that our county mission statement claims that we're to do is to provide, you know, a safe environment for our kids, and I think that's of utmost importance, and I think we do a pretty good job for the most part, but he did mention some things that maybe need to be discussed. I'm also glad about the stipends and the work that Ms. Edwards just put into seeing that come through. I, Ms. Robinson mentioned earlier that Mr. Owens is constantly saying that we have the best and the brightest students, and we do, but I also think we have some of the best and brightest staff and teachers and support personnel, and I think, you know, rewarding them with this stipend is a great idea, and maybe helped them out a little bit during these hard times economically. Also glad to hear about the SOL scores and some of the, some of the great news coming along there, and I know we're chronic absenteeism is something we need to work on, but I think Dr. Johnson will be starting, hopefully, hopefully October 1st in the, is that a attendance coordinator position? And I think he'll do some good stuff there to help us with those numbers and help Ms. Martin, you know, and she also mentioned that hopefully with just a few days left in September, we were, knock on wood, we're still in the 90s, is that correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, so, you know, that's good news also. Any, anytime we can get good news like that on the attendance, that's excellent. And, you know, I would like to congratulate our chairman on his nomination. I think well-deserved, and wish him the best at that, and support him any way we can, so. We'll probably have a meeting here, and I want to expect all of you that voted in favor of it to be in attendance. Mr. Mullins?
Well, I'd like to echo everything you guys said. I mean, I think you guys covered everything really well. I really enjoyed the choir, and I think that's a wonderful thing. I'm, I like Mr. Hicks, I'd like to see him come back. Good to see the attendance percentages are back and have increased. That's really beneficial to the students. Their athletic teams are doing great. Stipends are a great encouragement for the teachers and employees as well. And I think to put the icing on the cake, and somebody that I'll claim as my cousin now is our very own Jason Hicks, where he's nominated to be his BA regional chair, I think that's a great.
Glad to finally make the cut. What's that job pay, Mr. Mullins?
It doesn't pay anything, I can tell you that right now.
All right. So this time, we'll go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A of the Code of Virginia. There'll be a closed meeting for the purpose of, one, employment issues related to discussion or consideration of specific individuals for employment as an assistant principal, central office secretary, accounts payable clerk, special education teachers, part-time cook, substitutes, coaches, FMLA, and resignations pursuant to Virginia Section Code 2.2-3711A1. Two, student early graduation request pursuant to Virginia Section, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A and 2. And three, to consult with legal counsel regarding the investment of public funds associated with school construction and consultation regarding actual or probable litigation, along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A6, 7, and 8 of the Code of Virginia. This time, do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.
All right, do I hear a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now out of closed session. Mrs. Robinson, will you please read the certification?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Dixon County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and or as 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dixon County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Would you please certify?
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
Board members, do we have any motions to come from closed session?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the board approve all early graduation requests as presented in closed session.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any other motions to come from closed session?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the board approve all employment recommendations as presented in closed session.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other business to discuss? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.